Hello and welcome to our Tuesday evening workshop. Thank you all for being here. If you two could please introduce yourselves and kick it off.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor Heather Hunter, the City Administrator.
Tracy Roy, Finance Director.
I'd like to -- good evening to the new council and Mr. Mayor, Planning Board and Finance Committee members. I'm pleased tonight to bring you the proposed FY25 capital improvement in accordance with Section 605 and 606 of the city charter. Looking at what the plan provides, not only from a current year standpoint, but also a multi-year, a five-year coverage. So this plan offers projects from FY25 to FY29. It totals about $288 million in projects, of which $257 million come from city resources. That includes city, school, and utility bonds, as well as operating budgets. All of those are classified as city resources. This amount is up by about $34 million over the five-year period and about $21 million from city resources. You have a variety of projects that are driving this increase, but probably the two biggest requests include the school, sixth through eighth grade as well -- actually, I think it's fifth and sixth grade and the administrative offices, as well as the public works facility. That is in, I believe, FY29's request. So those are the big cost drivers between the two fiscal years. Excuse me. So you will see, looking at the proposed local resources, you have what is the breakdown of funding options for FY25, as well as the five-year plan. And if you look at the FY25 amount, that has about a $13.1 million increase from the FY24 request. Not what was actually approved, but when you're talking apples to apples from that request. Of that amount of the $13 million increase, $10 million of that is that redundant water line that you're seeing. And then we have an increase of about $1 million each between the city and school. So here's what we're looking at from a bond standpoint. And again, we will discuss FY25 more specifically later, but you will see those requests. You will see currently the school department only has a three-year request for projects. And then overall, you will see in the FY28, that pop to the $84 million. That's where that public works facility, the big administrative office for public service -- or public works was requested. Looking at where we are now from a debt standpoint, you will see the breakdown. Currently, if you look on the books as of December 31st, and for the new council, I would remind you that the city's fiscal year is July to June. So having this kind of half-year look is rare. Most things will be on a true fiscal year with a June 30 year end. But this kind of gives you the most up-to-date information when you're looking at capital funding. That's why we use the December 31st. So we have just under $43 million outstanding in city debt. School debt is just shy of $69 million. But I would offer, of that amount, $36 million and change is funded from the state. They get reimbursed for the new school constructions on three of the schools. Waters and sewer have about the same amount of debt service. Water's about $20 million. Sewer's about $18 million. And stormwater, which you can tell that that's, you know, still a really fairly recent fund that was created, is hovering right about $13 million. We have two legacy TIF special revenues that had debt service. That's why you see such a small amount there. There are some projects. One of the projects that will be discussed tonight talks about burying the underlying utilities that will show in the future in this TIF special revenue line item. So you will see that stripped away from general fund. Additionally, we have what's known as authorized unissued. And that's exactly what it said. It's been authorized by a council. It may be three councils ago. It may be six councils ago. It may be last year. But it's unissued, which means we have not sold the debt. And that happens for a variety of reasons. First, we were required, when we did the initial Bates Mill agreement, to issue guaranteed bonds related to the parking requirement in that agreement. So of that, about $4,080,000 relates to those guaranteed bonds. Likewise, in 2014, we authorized $2.5 million for the Bates Mill 5. That's when they initially talked about demolition. And then the Mill 5 group got together, and we still have that outstanding option on that. So those bonds are authorized, but they're not issued. We're leaving them out there in case work is needed to be done on the mill. Likewise, in 2020, we had about $1 million worth of what's known as a water treatment contingency. So if something were to happen to the lake, we already have that authorization on the book to do some dosage of some chemical needed to address an immediate and urgent need for the lake quality. And then the last two pieces are the FY23 and the FY24 capital improvement amount. So FY23 is about $19.4 million and FY24 is about $16.4 million. The city strategically usually sells debt two years after you authorize, about a year and a half to two years afterwards. The reason why we do that is by the time it gets authorized and designs happen and so forth, the spend down doesn't really happen until a year, sometimes two years later. And the way that construction has been lately, finding a contractor, is a little challenging as well. The IRS, we issue our debt tax-free. So whoever holds our bonds and gets interest off those bonds, they do not have to pay federal income tax on that. So part of that requirement is we have to meet a spend-down requirement. So we have 24 months from date of issuance to spend all of those proceeds. So we lag it a little bit just to make sure we are in compliance with that. One particular issue that we look at is what is the debt service in relation to the entire operating budget? So when you're looking at this and you're looking at the current operating budget, FY24, where the city debt to the operating budget, excluding debt service, is 11.4. School is 8.7. And again, that's independent of that reimbursement. So the total is about 9.7%. To give you a gauge, when you were looking at like FY09 to FY15, just the general fund piece alone was 23% of our budget. So it shows you, and I'll talk about how we've improved our debt situation since that time, but it'll show you what the peak is looking at. During the 2015, when we had all the budget elimination or position eliminations and some of the economic downturn, we hit a high of 29.5% of the operating budget. So you will see, as a barometer, we're doing pretty well. And this is just kind of another graphical representation. I benchmark everything to our 2005 numbers. That was our peak. At that point, we had about $72 million in principal outstanding and just under $30 million in interest. You fast forward today, our principal is hovering right about 37.4 and our interest is about $8 million. And interest alone, we dropped about 72% from that peak. So if nothing else, you know, the trend is good. It may not stay that way in the current rate environment, but we at least have the history on our side. So debt management. Part of this process is balancing the needs of the community and infrastructure with debt service. And it's no different than how you approach your own current budget. And from that standpoint, is we need to evaluate how we're going to do that. Everybody recognized back in 2015 and 2005 that our debt was high. You know, when we had our bonds rated, the rating agency made comments. So the council at that point in time decided to authorize a debt authorization limit. So it started in October of '09, and it started out at that 97%. And then they dropped it again in 2011 to the 80% rule. And we're going to see how that's calculated further into the presentation. But maintaining authorizations as close to that 80% limit is one mechanism we used to control debt. The second mechanism, mechanism similar to what you would do in your own home, is you may refinance your personal mortgage for a more advantageous rate. The city has that same luxury, and we've been doing that for several years now. I think our last refinancing was back in 2021. And at that point in time, the cumulative present value savings from all of our refunding was about $11.6 million. So that's can amount to one year's worth of a bond sale. Unfortunately, with the rate environment being what it is now, we will not have that opportunity in the future. And pretty much everything we've refunded, we've already refunded. So that probably is not a mechanism that we could use moving forward. Moving recurring expenditures to the operating budget. That is always a goal, and sometimes we're more successful about that than others. With relatively low property value increases, it makes it challenging to do that, but that's something that we will always consider. But where we have been successful is the last bullet, is using that unallocated fund balance to cover those one-time costs and capital items. That not only allows us to move elements from the operating budget to that funding source, but we can also move items or projects from the bond funding source to that fund balance funding source. So, and we will talk about this more during the budget presentation, but just to kind of give you a flavor of what that looks like is we formally adopted a fund balance policy that enables us, or that rainy day fund that you've seen mentioned. That's a savings fund. So our floor is about 8% and our ceiling is 12%. So that's our range. In the past, from varying councils year to year, we've always hovered around that 10%. That's been kind of our sweet spot, that we've stayed within that. Looking at where we were for FY24, we have about $6.3 million that enables us to get to that 10%. And when we look at the budget come March, we will discuss that again. But that does give us some funding availability for those one-time elements that typically we do technology because it has such a short useful life. And some of those other elements, we will move out of the operating budget or suggest moving out of the bond fund into that funding source. And you'll see a list of what we're doing with that. So this is kind of a snapshot showing for the next five years, including the current, where we're looking at on principal and interest payments. And I would add, these are pre-sale numbers. We have not sold debt yet for this fiscal year. But that's where we stand right now. So we do have some wiggle room with that. Now on to some of the detailed projects. So these are broken down. These are the same lists that you will see, not only in the memo, but they also follow the detailed project sheets that are in the back. So the first group that totals $3,265,000 is for the airport. That is approved by the airport board. That is going to not only be requested in the city of Lewiston's budget, but also in the city of Auburn's budget. So you will see the total estimate there of the 3.2, of which city resources are $324,250. That includes our 50% of those projects. And then the hangar has, I believe, federal discretionary spending as well as potentially some FPA money. Likewise, with the 911 center, the requests were $2.8 million. You see our portion, our 50% of that is our portion. That is from the Joint 911 Committee. That was approved by that committee to submit to both agencies as well. The Transit Committee is the third one that follows suit with that. That is our normal funding for bus replacements. So it has cash available instead of peaking and valuing when we need to go out and buy buses. We have consistently funded about $50,000 per year. So that money is available when they do buy buses. The Transit, federal transit, require us to demonstrate that that funding's already in place and earmarked for that purpose before they can proceed with the purchase. The citywide revaluation, on February 2nd, you will have an update from our chief assessor, Bill Healy, on the process that we're kicking off for the revaluation. The amounts that were approved initially only included the real estate side. So the $20,000 that you're looking at over the next time period includes the personal property component. So that way, we have both pieces up to date. Jumping down to the economic development portion, you have canal ownership projects. Those are, that amount tends to stay the same amount each year, but it's addressing various areas of the canal. And we're looking at some bridge rehab work. We're continuing to clear, replace fencing, and so forth since our initial acquisition of the canal structure. Bates Mill 5 cleanup. That is probably the one that makes everybody cringe a little bit because it's such a big number. And we do have some grant money in there. We have some brownfield money in there. But you will notice, when you're looking at the detail, I think it's on page 28, that the estimated cost for this is pretty much the same whether we put a new roof on the mill or we demolish it completely. I will add that the option with Mr. Platts expires the end of February in 2026. So that'll kind of give you a timeframe of what we're looking at. The Public Art Fund, that's something that usually gets moved over to fund balance. That's a relatively new request. I believe the first time was this current fiscal year. That allows us for seed money to do the various murals, some of the initiatives that are coming forward, like the Main Street project this summer, to be able to provide seed money for other grants and just beautifying the city within the downtown and outskirts area. The Riverfront Island Master Plan, there's been a lot of work on that. If you have not participated in the Riverfront Island Master Plan or any of the studies, please go online. That's all online available to you to show what the strategic initiatives are with that project. So this again is part of the first phase. Most of it includes design work, but it also includes the trail around Beach Street and extending the Beach Street area. And the out years, FY26 and FY27 is really when you start seeing some of those plans mushroom into adhering to what the initial contractors had suggested for the scope of that project. The Red Shop Preservation, that's the Red Shop. That's kind of catty corner behind the Hampton Inn, right near the outdoor fitness center, and it is truly a red building. We have been doing work on that. Essentially, the entire underneath of that was rotting out. So we've reinforced the structure. We're looking at adding a bathroom in there as well as, since we had to come back and ask for money, we did get an estimate on what it would take to do a deck off of that building because there is interest in leasing that building for event space and other things. So that has the potential of being a revenue source for the city in the future. One thing I will recommend is pulling that amount of money and putting that against fund balance because the other IRS rule deals with private activity. So we cannot issue public debt if we're going to have it secured by one private individual. So that will be, and we've done that in the prior years, to avoid any non-compliance with our IRS rules. Destination and amenities, that was first requested last year. It was not funded. It's been requested this year. That allows the city, again, that's a seed money source, to say, "All right, what do we want to do to invigorate the downtown? To do something attraction?" We've talked about having parking kiosks that have, that are, you know, interactive. They may have the city streets or museum and the streets map on there. They may have a map on where are all the different murals on. Something like that to kind of kick off some of that technology and look at how to make it more interactive and inviting to come to our downtown area. As I mentioned earlier, the Three Lowell 55 Middle Street Housing Project, that TIF, that is our portion to bury the underground power lines for that. And again, that's contingent upon the developer meeting their benchmarks on the project moving forward. So if for some reason those benchmarks aren't met, then we, you know, we can postpone this project. The police department equipment for the new station is about $850,000. With construction costs being what they are, a lot of this we anticipated to be funded as part of the lease. When you're doing a new police station, in some instances, the main fire, central fire station versus the substation, those have to be what's known as a category three building. And they have to withstand, you know, significant earthquakes, things like that. That costs a lot of money to make that a category three. And it's going down deep enough to inserting steel pylons in order to do that. So because that has come in so expensive, we need to request additional funding to cover, you know, the evidence room lockers and some of the other locker room and furniture and so forth. So that is what this request represents. The two fire stations, fire substations are moving forward. The Main Street, for those who were on the council last year, you will notice that amount is very, should be somewhat familiar as that was what was reduced. And the FY24 LCIP, and lo and behold, we needed that once we went out and bid. So we are now requesting that to be restated to the full amount that was requested. And then the Lisbon Street Fire Station, that is to start the design work and the due diligence on that parcel. The Lewiston Technology Upgrades, that will probably be moved into the fund balance as well. That represents the annual rotation of server replacements. And I'm not going to, I'm sure Craig's behind me rolling his eyes saying, "That's not what..." But they're that memory storage, cameras, cabling, fiber, and all of that. So each year, he's got it outlined. You will see the detail in the back of your LCIP on that page. The Comprehensive Plan, again, is one of those annual allotments that allows the coding and planning department to bring in technical expertise on a particular element. They may, when we were doing a lot of the code revisions, that allows somebody to be brought in to help them with that. We've used some of that work when we had the Riverfront Island Master Plan consultants here. They did additional work based upon looking at that whole geography and infill space down that area. So that has money set aside to execute those projects rather than saying, "Oh, we really need this" and not have anything available to do that. Lincoln Street Parking Garage Deck repairs, that's pretty self-explanatory. They have found some cracks in the cement work that is leaching water. They want to address that before it becomes any worse. The Public Works Vehicle Wash Facility, that amount, you will notice that, you will also see that project listed underwater scoring stormwater as each one of those will have a funding source portion of that. And that represents a request that has been on the books for a while where it's a regulatory compliance because we can't just let the salt and sand and everything that comes off the truck go into the catch basins and, you know, follow the yellow ducky into the river. We need to be able to somehow remediate that salt and sand and so forth. And this provides a maintenance opportunity for our vehicles because if you look at our vehicles, the first thing that goes is anything related to that undercarriage with the corrosion and the salt. The Public Works Fire Suppression, we do not have up-to-code standards from the municipal garage and the office standpoint. So that is kind of, it's an internal public safety issue that we want to get addressed. Again, that would be very much an element for a fund balance authorization. The Armory Interior Renovation Project, that is kind of the second phase of the first phase of the project. So that, we're still in the basement of that project. They've been revamping the plumbing down there, the locker rooms. This finishes the office space and so forth in that area. And then it will go on, and you'll see in future years, you will see the HVAC for the main floor and some of the other ones. And that brings our armory pretty much up to a standard that if we really, really needed something in a severe emergency, that would have the facilities in place to do that. And right now, you know, we could have them at the high school, but if school starts the next day, that makes it very difficult. That doesn't mean that that's going to be available 24/7 because our armory is busy from 8:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night. So that would be only in extreme emergencies that we would use it as that option there. But it now gives us an option that we didn't have before. The exterior renovation piece deals with molding and trim work on the building. Some of it is rotten out, some of that needs to be repainted. So it's just, again, it's been on the list for a while. It's being requested again. it's been on, on the list for a while. It's being requested again. As we are looking at that armory to be more of a public use building and people going in there, making it look, you know, at as best as it can look. The Window Replacement for City Hall is another legacy project that I think that's probably been on the LCIP for maybe the last 15 or 20 years. That's how long this project has been in place. We have a lot of old windows that are drafty. The hardware on the windows does not work, so that makes it difficult to seal them properly, and it's an efficiency standpoint from heating and cooling. So that starts that request from a design standpoint with actual replacements coming in future years. The next two projects are rehab, specific rehab projects. Jan's Boulevard also has amounts funded in the stormwater and water budgets. And then Bradbury Road is just that. It's, it's the design work for this year, and actual construction will be, begin in future years. The Complete Streets Piece deals a lot with sidewalks and crosswalks. So it does a crosswalk on Main Street. It's looking at three crosswalks on Sabata Street, and I think a project on the five corners. So that's what this year's allocation is geared towards. The next two items, sidewalk and street maintenance programs, those are annual maintenance. You will see in the book that you will have a specific outline of which sidewalks and which streets are involved. So that detail, detail is furnished for you. The Solid Waste Facility, they went through transition with the new solid waste scale house management software. So the last piece of that project, because traffic was queuing on River Road, establishes that left-hand turn lane. So it, you know, people aren't driving on the, on the shoulder of the road to get around people who are waiting to turn into the solid waste facility. Main Street and East Avenue are DOT, Department of Transportation, projects. You will see of those projects for design work, our portion of that. The local share is $70,550. The Public Works Municipal Garage is the annual allotment for vehicle replacements for this year. You will also see a portion of that in the stormwater budget for the sweeper to be able to cross-charge that. And some of the trucks and vehicles and plows, we talked about the brine system. That will enable more vehicles or more equipment to be able to disperse that liquid brine in order to take advantage of that project that we use to save on salt and so forth. The Sunnyside Trail, there's two Sunnyside Park, there's the trail, and then on the next page, you will see park renovations. Both of those are eligible for CDBG. So Public Works will be requesting that as far as the CDBG application, the Community Development Block grant funding. Public Restrooms, this has been on and off the list for a couple of years now. Obviously, the City of Lewiston has a shortage of public bathrooms available. We do rent for some of our ball fields and soccer fields. We do rent porta-potties. We have not successfully been able to keep porta-potties around parking garages and in Kennedy Park. So the Public Works team went down to Portland and looked at what they were offering, and we're very happy with what they saw. It is, it's a doable solution. The biggest component, and this budget calls for seven locations that you will see broken down in the project, but there's no sense in funding this if you are not going to fund the operating costs needed to maintain it. We need a person. We need supplies. We need utilities, and we need to clean it. So please keep that in mind. That has about $107,000 price tag on the operating budget, all in if you want to move forward with that project. And again, we talked about the Sunnyside Park, Public Works Solid Waste Facility, the Leachase Cleaning System. That is a regulatory requirement, so that funds that piece. The Solid Waste Collection Carts, this will be something that we will be bringing back to council in the form of a workshop to get the new council up to speed on what's happening. You now see the various solid waste trucks have the people in the back to pick up the trash and throw them in. Our contractor is doing away with that process. So they are looking at the lift, and we need to buy the bins for all of those residents that are on the solid waste program. So that is what is represented in this cost. Auburn went through something similar, I believe, in the current year. They temporarily suspended the, their recycling program and use that money to help buy some of their totes or carts, but it is expensive because the number of carts, the sheer quantity that is needed. The Traffic and Street, single and light upgrades, that is an annual allotment that allows us to go around and refurbish lights and poles that we need to refurbish. So we stay on a cyclical time of replacing those. The Next Group represents projects that have been approved by the school department, school committee, and submitted by the school department. So you'll see the breakdown there. I will highlight again that grade six through eight central office expansion. That is the initial design work and exploratory money. That is a public referendum project. So that will need to go out for public referendum if we move forward with that. Our first utility presented is sewer. So you will see the first project listed is the sewers portion of the wash facility. You will say, see the same thing on water and stormwater. Otherwise, pretty much everything on that list are annual programs that we run through that meet some regulatory requirement. So we have an annual replacement for sewer mains and manholes. The equipment represents year two of vacuum piece of equipment. You have the collection and inspection. That's the filming of the lines. And the sewer pump station this year, the rotation is the Foss Road Pump Station. The annual meter replacement, that is split 50/50 with the water department. So we go out, or they go out and exchange meters to make sure everybody's meter's running properly, so people are getting billed correctly. The last item is, I will highlight, is paid through the sewer impact fees. So that does not hit an operating budget or a bond. That is based upon that impact fee that is paid through development. Likewise, you will see Stormwater has very similar. The first three items are the stormwater portion of those projects. And then the rest of the items with the, you know, up until Hartbrook are those annual replacements of culverts, the storm drains related to rehab projects and the inspection of those. The Hartbrook is an impaired stream, so that does remediation to see if we can get that upgraded and off that impaired list. And the 795 Lisbon Street, that replaces the issue that you've probably seen or heard about near Sullivan Tire and the sinking, that deals with that particular project in that area. And then Water. So again, you have the Equipment Wash Facility, the Jan Boulevard portion that belongs to Water, your SCADA treatment, which is an annual allow, allocation, excuse me, as well as the main replacement. You will see the Lewiston Auburn Water Treatment Program, that's shared with Auburn Water District for lake work. And then that meter replacement program that we said was split between sewer and water. Water has its own pump stations that are served on a rotational basis. And then you will see that redundant water line. So the first piece of that deals with the work underneath the bridge on Main Street. So that's phase one. I will share with the new council, I think the old council may or may not be aware, that's a multimillion-dollar project. A large portion is funded through ARPA money, the stimulus, stimulus, stimulus money that we received not too long ago. But because of that project and the impact particularly on the City of Auburn, we had issues with the bid. We have two contractors that are actually joining together to do the work, which is fairly an unusual process within this, and a lot of the work has to be done on nights and weekends. So it is going to be a very expensive project. We talked about that 80% rule. Here's how that is calculated. So you look at the payments for the last three fiscal years, and it's measured based upon tax-based funded. So you'll have city school. We remove the amount that the state is funding. You will see this in the back of your LCIP document after all the projects. And then the Coliseum Debt, even though it's, it's the former Coliseum Debt when the city owned the Coliseum, because that is still funded through tax base, that's included in there. Add them all up, divide by three. So our three-year average is that $8,650,000 times 80%, reduces our limit down to $6,917,577. Right now, between city and school, the request totaled $25.7 million. So we are $18.8 million over the budget. So we have some work to do. So again, that's probably presenting this just an easier way from a formatting standpoint. I will say, since it was adopted in 2012, the city council has been able to, with the help of the Finance Committee and the Planning Board, successfully reduce LCIP budgets by an average of about 23.5%. So what that means is if you look at the initial request, on average, since we started measuring this, the requests have been able to be reduced by, you know, essentially a fourth of the request. Last year alone, we reduced it by just about 49%. So it, it is possible. It's just it's very difficult. We knew this, we knew this from a financing side of the house of the city, that we were going to reach a point where we were going to be in not in compliance with this 80% rule. Because you're gonna get your principal payments down so low, and with the projects that we had being requested for, over the five-year period, it is, it's, it's gonna be hard, if not virtually impossible, to obtain that 80% rule. I'm not ready to recommend throwing that 80% rule out because it is a great litmus test from an elected official standpoint to evaluate those projects really stringently. And really looking at that because at some point, once those bigger ticket projects are bonded, that three-year average is going to increase. So when that happens, that 80% rule may be better able to be in compliance, you know, from an, from an adoption standpoint. So it's just something to think about. There's no, you know, do I anticipate being able to achieve this this year? Not unless you really make some decisions, some hard decisions on some projects that we have requested out there. So looking at the schedule, so the first public hearing will be held on February 2nd. What that means is the mayor will open and, open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public can speak on any one of the projects, or the group of the projects, or the debt services on the whole, and we just take that public comment feedback. On or before February 15th, we will receive recommendations from both the Planning Board and the Finance Committee. They will send recommendations to you on where they suggest cutting, maybe moving projects out, asking questions, those types of things. You will receive those recommendations on your, or ending your agenda packet on February 20th. That's when you are scheduled to adopt the LCIP. Charter requires the adoption to be by May 1st. And just to be clear, this is a planning document. When I say you're adopting it, you're adopting that, yes, Heather and Tracy and the departments of the City of Lewiston, you've complied. Here's a written plan document. You've given us the information to look at going forward to determine how we want to proceed with capital components of our budget. On June 4th, you will actually be asked to approve funding for which projects are selected to be funded for. So you do have some time before you actually have to make that decision. And with the way kind of the calendars work, you know, Tracy and I fully anticipate having to go before the Planning Board and the Finance Committee and address questions and answers and so forth. I would ask all three groups, the Planning Board, the Finance Committee, and you as the city council, to, as you're going through and evaluating different projects, if you have questions or comments, submit them to me via email. We will get the answers, and then we will disseminate those questions and answers out to all three groups. So everybody's, because if you have a question, my guess is the Planning Board, the Finance Committee will have a similar question. And then that way, everybody's hearing the same Q and A, and everybody's able to make, you know, the rational decisions based upon those, the results of that, the questions. So with that, that kind of concludes the presentation. Again, I would be happy to entertain questions. I know it's a lot of information thrown at you. There's a lot of information to digest in this book. Please feel free to either reach out, email, and that would go for the Planning Board and the Finance Committee that are sitting right behind me. You know, that works, that invitation is equally inviting to them as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that very much, Administrator Hunter and Tracy. And with that, that concludes our workshop, and our meeting will start at 7. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, welcome to our Lewiston City Council meeting. We're going to kick things off with the Pledge of Allegiance and we have, I believe, Sarah Mack, right? We have Sarah Mack from the winning mock trial team will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us this evening. And if the council will indulge me before we get going here, one of my friends is having a birthday today. He's 35. Happy birthday, Valick. And now we will, if the Lewiston High School Mock Trial State Championship can join me up front, we will do a presentation. Hello, yes, okay. All right, we are recognizing the Lewiston High School Mock Trial State Championship Team. And we have this proclamation that I will read. Whereas Lewiston High School Mock Trial students assume the roles of attorneys and witnesses in hypothetical court cases and trials, which include articulating opening and closing statements, testimonies, and conducting direct and cross-examinations, and whereas presentations are made before main judges and attorneys and students are scored on preparation, mastery of facts, rules of evidence, demeanor, and overall physical presence, and whereas this year's case was the state of Maine versus Sammy Brewster, which focused on manslaughter and providing alcohol to a minor, and in subsequent deliberations, LHS defeated Casco Bay High School, Brunswick High School, and Bonnie Eagle High School, and, and whereas on December 8, the LHS Mock Trial Team defeated Cape Elizabeth High School in a statewide high school competition held at the Capital Judicial Center in Augusta, a win that sends them to the Nationals in Delaware in May, and whereas this is the second state, second consecutive state championship for Lewiston in the Mock Trial competition, and the first in history that Lewiston has successfully defended its championship. It is also Lewiston's third state championship in the last six years. And whereas Lewiston High School students who prepared for countless hours to win the championship are Holly...
Alenago.
Alenago, Lily Bellio, Zara Bimby, Isabella Caldera, Olivia Crowley, Enzo...
Giopello.
Giopello, Ava Goldar, Taylor Jean, Sarah Mack, Victoria...
Empaka.
Empaka, Cara Pullin, Ethan Rinco, Gabby Thomas, and Adri Viles, and whereas these students received guidance, instruction, and encouragement from their coaches and mentors, Andrew Belanger, Michelle Crowley, Amy Dietrich, Paul Dion, where's Paul, who happens to be a Lewiston mayor from 1980 to 1983, that was about 100 years ago. You look fabulous, Paul, you look fabulous. And Ron LaBelle, Joan McCary, Chirofysic, Hunter Steele, and Robert Shepherd, and whereas appreciation is also extended to the families and friends of Lewiston High School Mock Trial Team members, supporting them in hours of preparation and competition. The team has done Lewiston proud and we wish them well as they prepare for the Nationals in May. Now therefore, I, Carl Elcheline, Mayor of the City of Lewiston, Maine, do hereby officially recognize Lewiston High School Mock Trial Team for its December 8 championship, state championship, and commend members and coaches for their hard work and dedication. A round of applause, please. All right, we're gonna, we're gonna line up for a photo here.
Go a little closer in. Okay, ready? Counsel, there you go. Three, two, one. One more. Three, two, one. One, like, three, two, one. Now you're all dismissed, thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, I believe we're ready to begin.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. All roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the Counselor of Ward 1.
And I understand we have, we're going to accept the minutes for the December 19 meeting. May I have a motion? Counselor Herman? Second by Counselor Calant. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are now up to public comment. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government. This period is reserved for non-agenda items. Public comment is also allowed during individual agenda items. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name for the record and please indicate if you are Lewiston resident. And because this is the business meeting of the City Council, all questions should be directed to the mayor who will ask staff to follow up at a future time. It is illegal for City Council to allow comments related to personnel matters. All personnel complaints should be made directly to the City Administration Office. Public comment. Madam Clerk, I believe we are moving to Agenda Item Number 1.
Sure, item number 1, adoption of the rules to govern the City Council for the ensuing council year. Requested action to adopt the rules to govern the City Council for the period of January 9, 2024 to January 7, 2025, as presented.
May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Counselor...
Chittum.
Chittum, thank you. May I have a second? Counselor Najin, thank you.
Second.
Discussion among the counselors. Public comment. Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 1. I'm sorry. Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Agenda Item Number 2.
Item Number 2, public hearing on a renewal application for a special amusement permit for live entertainment for Da Vinci's 150 Mill Street. Requested action to grant a special amusement permit for live entertainment to Da Vinci's 150 Mill Street.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Herman?
Second.
Second by Counselor Chittum. Discussion. Counselor Chittum?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend the motion to grant a special amusement permit for live entertainment for Da Vinci's at 150 Mill Street in accordance with Section 1074 of the, 79 of the city ordinances.
I'm sorry, you would like to amend the, the motion?
To add the phrase "in accordance with Section 1079 of the Code of Ordinances."
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second or, I guess, what is the rationale for that?
You need a second before we can discuss it.
May I have a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Counselor Herman, second it, yes, I guess, discussion on this.
Thank you. The purpose of the amendment is to recognize that Section 1079 authorizes licenses for special amusement for the duration of the term of the underlying license. In this case, Da Vinci's has a Class A food service establishment. The code, Section 1079, says that the special amusement permit is valid so long as the underlying license, the original licenses, that simply comports with the existing code. This would mean then that the special amusement license would lapse at the same time that the underlying Class A food service establishment lapses, which would be in April, if I'm not mistaken. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes, please.
So liquor, special amusement permits are defined in state statutes. In addition, they are also defined in city ordinances. For the benefit of the new counselors, state statutes are, state statutes are created, those are the state laws that will govern various items, and then municipalities are allowed to establish their own set of city ordinances and they can be more stringent than state laws. And so the city has done that for the almost 25 years I've been here, we've always had a special amusement ordinance that has regulated additional aspects. State law says that the special amusement permit coincides with the liquor license expiration. You can be a restaurant, a food service establishment, and not serve liquor and not be required to have a special amusement permit. The live entertainment and the service and consumption on premise of liquor go hand in hand. So the special amusement permits expire with the liquor license and they coincide. As Counselor Chittum noted, the food service establishments, the restaurant business licenses in the city all expire April 30th under our current code, but throughout the year you will see special amusement permits come up, and that is because they coincide with the liquor license application deadline for that particular restaurant. In Da Vinci's case, for many years, they had a food service license and they had a liquor license, but they did not have an entertainment license. When they located to their new, new to me, new to us, location, which was multiple years ago, they had more space, so they decided to add a special amusement permit at that time, and it had to coincide with the date of the liquor license by state regulations.
Thank you for that, Madam Clerk. Further discussion from the council? Counselor Calant?
So for clarification, if it expires in April, we can use it again in April? Because he's trying to tie the two together? Does it automatically go to the state liquor license? It seems to me to be kind of two different issues.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, so, so Counselor, I don't actually, I don't have Section 10979 in front of me, the city ordinance, but as Counselor Chittum noted, if it does coincide with the food service license, then right, this special amusement permit that you're issuing tonight, which would normally be an annual 12-month, sounds like it would only be for the next couple of months until April 30th, and then the business would have to reapply. They've already paid for a full year, so would have to look at reimbursing them for a prorated amount. We don't bring a permit to you unless the applicant is paid, along with submitting a completed application. So we would need to reimburse them a prorated amount accordingly if it's going to expire the 30th of April and not 12 months from now.
Just for clarification, you're saying with the, with the proposed amendment, it would expire the 30th of April?
Again, I don't have the ordinance language in front of me, but Counselor Chittum noted that that's the section reference, so I will go with Counselor Chittum's comment, but I don't have, that is the, Section 10, Chapter 10 is the entertainment ordinance of the city Code of Ordinances. I don't have that in my binder, I don't bring that with me to council meetings, so I can't double check that reference.
Okay. I guess, at this point, if we, if we pass this amendment and this amendment gets tacked onto this agenda item, it will result in some administrative burden for the city to, to reimburse, and then we will have to bring it up again on the 30th of, or in May, I guess, in two months.
Well, I won't call it, I wouldn't call it administrative burden, but it would be some additional paperwork, it sounds like, that we would need to prepare.
Okay, thank you. Further comments from the council? Or Counselor Calant, yes?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my question would be, that means every organization now we'd have to look at with a different measuring stick, vice, them just, when their liquor license, because they're naturally going to do that, line the two up. They could have to be applying twice, in some cases, in a year for an entertainment license, would that be a correct thought?
It sounds like it, I would concur, Counselor, yes.
So that would actually be additional work requirement, not just on us, but the individual having to pay for two months, and then reapply again in April for 12 months, which it can't be 12 months, because if their liquor license ends in January, then it'll only be for eight more months. So we could do this three times in one year for one establishment, potentially. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Chittum?
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Madam Clerk, for that explanation. I was unaware...
Do you mind moving the microphone? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for that explanation. I was unaware there was a nexus between the liquor license and the special entertainment license. Having looked at this only through the lens of it, of the comportment of the city ordinances, I felt that it was a wise move. Given your explanation, then I will withdraw my motion to amend.
Is that something that you will agree with, Counselor Herman?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, counselors. We're now going to public comment for this agenda item. And back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
I understand we're on Agenda Item Number 3, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir, item number 3, public hearing and first passage for a contract rezoning of the properties at 43 and 51 North Lisbon Road from Highway Business Zoning District to the HB District with the additional use of storing, milling, drying, heat treatment, torifying, and processing of whole logs into parts for musical instruments and musical instrument accessories. Requested action that the proposed amendment to Appendix A of the Code of Ordinances, Zoning and Land Use Code, Article 4, Establishment of Districts, for a contract zone located at 43 and 51 North Lisbon Road from Highway Business Zoning District to the HB District with the additional use of storing, milling, drying, heat treatment, torifying, and processing of whole logs into parts for musical instruments and musical instrument accessories, receive first passage by a roll call vote.
May I have a motion, please? Counselor Calant? Followed by Counselor Najin. Director Hediger, please kick us off.
So, hi, counselors, I don't know all of you, David Hediger, Director of Planning and Code. You're gonna see some of these in your tenure here, this is a contract rezoning. I don't know how much detail you want to get into it, so I'll just explain what it is that he's asking for at this point. The property is zoned Highway Business right now. Bourgeois Guitars has been looking for a site in Lewiston for some time, and given the uses that he's looking to do, all the uses that the city clerk identified there, doesn't really, excuse me, doesn't really fit with that property specifically there. So when you do a contract zone, you can pick specific uses to allow on that property with or without conditions that may be deemed appropriate either by the planning board or you folks. In this case, it's simply adding those specific uses, so when you look at the rezoning document, and this document ends up getting recorded at the Registry of Deeds, it runs with the land as long as necessary, and it's very specific. It allows the underlying zone today, Highway Business, to continue with all the space and bulk standards, but then it'll allow those specific uses, specific to bourgeois guitar as far as the milling, drying, heating, and whatnot. This takes two readings before you folks, so there's this hearing tonight, there'll be a second reading, and then becomes effective in 30 days after that. For them to develop the site, then, then they need to go back to the planning board and they need to go through the development review process where they hit all those criteria as well. Chris Fling is here on behalf of Bourgeois Guitar. If there's specific questions for him, I'm sure he can answer them.
Thank you, Director Hediger. Discussion from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Chittum?
I'd like to direct questions to Director Hediger, if I may?
Yeah, Director Hediger, step right up.
This is a contract zone in, for those two parcels in the Highway Business District that would permit this particular use in perpetuity on those parcels.
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yep.
What is the process for authorizing a contract zone contingent upon the successful completion of development review and the planning board?
On successful review of the planning board? There might be a condition you could consider. I think if I was the applicant or the property owner, I might be a little concerned about that. Often, in this case, this is a good example, they have a purchase and sale agreement on the property. They're gonna start to need spending money here, right, as far as design, engineering, and whatnot like that. I don't know about this case specifically, but you're putting up money and you don't know if you have the rezoning in place yet. And then, that's a nice assurance to have. A lot of these developers want to know that they have the zoning in place, they can actually pursue the uses that they want. Development review, as some of you know from being on the planning board, you should get approval when you go through development review if you hit all the criteria. It's just a matter of hitting the criteria, so I, we haven't done a condition like that. I don't know that that's really necessary. It's really gonna be up to the applicant at that point whether or not they feel strongly enough to move forward with the project based upon the support they get from you folks.
If I could engage in dialogue with the applicant, I'm certainly in favor of this project, and I would love to see it happen. However, I'm concerned that were circumstances to change and other sources or other alternatives be found, and Lord forbid that the development review process didn't fail, if this council authorizes contract zoning on this parcel and this particular project, for some reason, doesn't go through, that contract zoning applies to the parcel, and, and we have committed to it. I think that you can still have the assurances you want that the, that the parcel will be rezoned if we approve that on a contingent basis, relying on the planning board then to go through all of the fugitive emissions and noise, noise control and all of those other things that you have to go through anyway. Does that make a difference in your approach to this project?
There, there are a number of unknowns there. It seems to me that the two questions kind of go hand in glove in that if, if we were not able to meet the criteria of the planning board through the development process, we wouldn't be able to continue with the operations that you're seeking to permit anyway. However, I do understand that there's, you know, potentially some exposure to the amendment being tied to the property as opposed to, let's say, the lifespan of our business operating on that location. But what I would, what I would ask the council to consider is whether or not those uses are commensurate with the level of impact that you view as permissible in that location regardless of tenancy and ownership. Because if we don't meet the criteria for the planning board, well, shame on us, and, and we won't be able to operate there. So, but assuming we do, you know, that, what, what we need to consider here today is, is whether or not the impact on the community is, is going to be such that it's, it's something in operation that you wouldn't want to, to see happen in that location, in which case the sooner we know is, as David said, the better. Does that, does that adequately address your question?
I think so, yes. I, I would simply like to reiterate that I personally am very much in favor of this project, and I think that a contract rezoning ordinance change conditioned on planning board approval of the development review doesn't impact you adversely in any way, but it does provide a certain level of protection for the city.
The only question I would have, and this might be a question for you, David, is I think it's important for us to be able to move forward with the project that any, you know, doubt as to the potential use of this location is removed prior to closing, and we, of course, wouldn't be able to go through that planning board review until after we took ownership and completed a lot of the retrofitting that has to happen for that property. So there is some exposure for us in moving forward. Again, that, they're very closely related, so what you're asking for is that we meet the planning board requirements and the development criteria, which we're gonna have to do anyway. So I, I take your point. I think that's probably something that I would have to talk to the executive team at, you know, at a, at a roundtable meeting, just to make sure that everyone's comfortable with that. We're gonna have to meet both metrics either way.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say right now, I'm not in favor of any, placing any conditions on this agenda item, and, on this agenda item, and I encourage the council just to pass it as is. Counselor Calant? Do you mind moving the microphone?
Director Hediger, please. This has already been through one passage of the planning board, correct?
Last night.
Right, so I mean, the reality is, we know, it's, if they wouldn't send it to us had they not thought of this, I agree with the mayor that it needs to fly as it is and keep things moving forward. We don't want to slow down process, we want to speed up process to get as much work and maybe new employees and things we can here in the city. Thank you.
Whether it's any consolation, Mayor, not necessarily specific to this, but we've had contract zonings before where the uses have been abandoned. Bourgeois guitar moves away from this property or something for that reason, and the new owner would then take an action to rescind the contract rezoning, because this gets recorded. There's a requirement that these documents be recorded within 30 days. So for some reason, a contract zoning from 20 years ago is no longer relative or something like that. It's not necessarily a cloud on the title, but exists out there, and so they'll end up recording a, a rescission of that contract rezoning, basically reverting it, and you'll see in here that it reverts back to the underlying zoning district if there was any violations or for some reason they don't want it anymore, so that there is something there to have it revert back if necessary.
Thank you, Director Hediger. Further discussion from the council? Public comment? Back to the council? Counselor Najin?
I would simply say that I'm fully in support of, of the rezoning, the contract rezoning based on the history of this particular organization within our city and, and what they've, what they've brought to the table for us over a period of time, so.
Further comments? Thank you so much for being here, Chris.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Agenda Item Number 4.
Item Number 4, resolve authorizing a transfer of $25,000 from the Main Street Paving Project to the DOT, to the Main DOT's Planning Partnership Initiative Project to study transportation improvements. Requested action to approve the resolve authorizing a transfer of $25,000 from the Main Street Paving Project to the Main DOT's Planning Partnership Initiative Project to study transportation improvements.
May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Chittum?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you for the second, Counselor Herman. Discussion. Public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward 1?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Agenda Item Number 5.
Item Number 5, resolve authorizing a budget transfer in the amount of $37,300 from the salary reserve account to make the temporary caseworker a permanent position for the remainder of the year. Requested action to approve the resolve authorizing a budget transfer in the amount of $37,300 from the salary reserve account to make the temporary caseworker a permanent position for the remainder of the year.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Herman?
So moved.
Counselor Harriman?
Second.
Second by Counselor Roy. Discussion, or Administrator Hunter?
Just real briefly, Mr. Mayor, just as noted in the memo that was accompanying this agenda item, we have seen increased levels of activity in casework in the general assistance office. We did hire a temporary position. This would bring that office staff count up to a level that was two years ago, if not three years ago, definitely two years ago, when similar walk-in traffic was at the level that it is now. So it replaces and reinstores that position to a previous level in that particular department.
Thank you, Administrator Hunter. Discussion. Counselor Glant?
Thank you, Mayor. Will this become a permanent position for next year's budget as well?
Yes, it would be.
Counselor Chittam, did you have something?
Thank you. Administrator Hunter, is, what's the rough percentage of the salary reserve that this 37,000 would be? A ballpark figure?
Of how much, what's the balance in that account at this point?
Roughly, yes.
I'm thinking, give or take, it's upwards to probably around $800,000.
Okay, thank you.
So there's more than ample amount there to cover it.
Public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number six.
Item number six, authorization for the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to approve and sign all applications to operate bino, bingo, and other games of chance on behalf of the municipal officers. Requested action, order that the city council hereby authorizes the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to approve and sign all applications to operate bino, bingo, and other games of chance on behalf of the municipal officers during the period January 9th, 2024 through January 7th, 2025.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Glant?
Second.
Second by Counselor Chittam. Discussion? Public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Agenda item number seven.
Item number seven, authorization for the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to approve and sign all permits for circuses and carnivals on behalf of the municipal officers. Requested action, order that the city council hereby authorizes the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to approve and sign all permits for a circus or carnival on behalf of the municipal officers during the period January 9th, 2024 through January 7th, 2025.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittam?
Second.
Second by Counselor Sewell.
Sewell.
Thank you, thank you. Discussion. Counselor Nagy?
Actually, I'll wait.
Okay. Public comment? And back to the council. Counselor Nagy?
I just have one question about the procedure, I guess, here. So when somebody applies for a circus or a carnival, that's approved on a municipal level, but if it's an event permit, that's actually approved through the council? Is that correct?
Sort of.
Okay.
So circuses and carnivals are defined specifically in municipal ordinances and says that the municipal officers shall issue those. Because of timing and whatnot, it just, over the years, the council has authorized us to sign off on it, my office, we don't sign off on it until the applicable city inspections are done, police, fire code, that sort of a thing. Special events permits, typically what would come to council would be an outdoor entertainment permit. And yes, the city council is the one who would approve those because the city code of ordinances requires a public hearing be held for all outdoor entertainment events, any live entertainment that's going to take place on city property, the city council must hold a public hearing, and then the city council would approve or deny, or approve with conditions. Yes.
So just following up on that?
Sure.
We don't have to explore this right now, but maybe there's a possibility in the future of moving the events permits to like a consent agenda as opposed to?
We can't hold it on the consent agenda because of the public hearing requirement. Anything that requires a public hearing cannot be held on the consent agenda because the consent agenda is adopted in one blanket motion with no discussion. So the only thing that's on the consent agenda are designed to be really routine matters of business that normally would not generate any discussion or dialogue or questions, with the understanding that the council or citizens always have a right to have an item removed from the consent agenda so there can be some dialogue and discussion on that item.
Not to belabor a point, but just to verify, I just want to make sure I've got this correct. So if we were to hold like a circus, that would not, there would not be like a public hearing for that at all?
Correct, correct. Circuses and carnivals are specifically listed as separate licenses in the code, and it's probably been that way since the seventies or eighties. They do not require a public hearing.
Okay, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Counselor Nagy. Further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Chittam, yes.
Thank you. Not germane to this particular agenda item, but is there a process by which the council can review the fee schedules? I understand the fee for, what are we talking about here? Circuses and carnivals is $180 per day, per the fee schedule. How does the council review that fee schedule for all of these various fees?
If I may, Counselor Chittam, we will move that to new business rather than discuss it for this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Further discussion on this agenda item? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number eight.
Item number eight, authorization for the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to sign all liquor license applications on behalf of the municipal officers. Order that the city council hereby authorizes the city clerk and/or deputy clerk to sign all liquor license applications on behalf of the municipal officers during the period January 9th, 2024 through January 7th, 2025.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Glant?
Second.
Second by Counselor Harriman. Discussion? Public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number nine.
Item number nine, authorization for the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to approve and sign all applications for utility poll permits on behalf of the municipal officers. Requested action, order that the city council hereby authorizes the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to approve and sign all applications for utility poll permits on behalf of the municipal officers during the period January 9th, 2024 through January 7th, 2025.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Glant?
Second.
Second by Counselor Roy. Discussion? Public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number 10.
Item number 10, authorization for the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to approve and sign all licenses for closeout sale permits on behalf of the municipal officers. Requested action, order that the city council hereby authorizes the city clerk and/or deputy city clerk to approve and sign all licenses for closeout sale permits on behalf of the municipal officers during the period January 9th, 2024 through January 7th, 2025.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Harriman?
Second.
Second by Counselor Nagy. Discussion? Public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Agenda item number 11.
Item number 11, authorization for the finance director, treasurer, treasury manager, tax collector, deputy treasurer, and the investment officer, deputy treasurer, manager to act on behalf of the municipal officers regarding deeds, liens, and municipal investments. Requested action, order that the city council hereby authorizes the finance director, treasurer, treasury manager, tax collector, deputy treasurer, and the investment officer, deputy treasurer, treasury manager to withhold monies payable by the city of Lewiston to cover taxes due pursuant to main revised statutes annotated Title 30A, Section 905, to sign on behalf of the city the necessary deeds and liens and tax settlements, and to invest funds owned by the city of Lewiston in accordance with main revised statutes annotated Title 30A, Section 5706, and the city's investment policy, and to execute any instrument as may be necessary, proper, or convenient to accomplish any such purchase, sale, assignment, or transfer during the period January 9th, 2024 through January 7th, 2025.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Glant?
Second.
Second by Counselor Sewell. Discussion? Madam Clerk? Public comment? And back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Agenda item number 12.
Item number 12, authorization for the city administrator and deputy city administrator to approve or deny all requests to hang banners, post-community event signs on municipal property, and place temporary signs, flags, and decorations in the public right-of-way on behalf of the municipal officers. Order that the city council hereby authorizes the city administrator and deputy city administrator to review and approve or deny all requests to hang banners, post-community event signs on city property, and place temporary signs, flags, and decorations in the public right-of-way on behalf of the municipal officers during the period of January 9th, 2024 through January 7th, 2025.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Glant?
Second.
Second by Counselor Chittam. Discussion? Public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number 13.
Item number 13, authorization for deputy city administrator and/or finance director to have signatory authority for the city administrator when the administrator is unavailable. Requested action, order that the city council hereby authorizes the deputy city administrator or in the absence of the deputy city administrator, the finance director, to have signatory authority for the city administrator when the administrator is unavailable during the period of January 9th, 2024 through January 7th, 2025.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittam, second by Counselor Harriman. Discussion? Public comment?
Matt Roy, word three. Wouldn't it make, notwithstanding MRSA and any, wouldn't this be better served as a, in the charter? Or our ordinances? Unless there's some kind of state statute I'm not aware of. Mr. Mayor?
Administrator Hunter, do you want to comment on that?
Sure. There is the absentee language in the charter. But it doesn't specifically cover signatory rights.
Oh, if I may, so we've got to put words in the city administrator's mail, so we'd need a revised charter?
That's not what I'm saying.
Ah, well, but that would answer the question, my original question, though, correct? If it was in the charter?
Likewise, this action can do it as well.
Just trying to save an agenda item.
Further public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word one?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number 14.
Item number 14, appointment of city council representatives to various boards and committees. I will note that on the next page, motion to approve the following appointments of the city council representatives to the various boards and committees. 911 Committee, Counselor Nagy; Airport Board of Directors, Counselor Chittam; Andrews Skoggin County Budget Committee, District 1, Counselor Galant; District 2, Counselor Longchamp; AVCO, Counselor Nagy and Counselor Chittam; CDBG Committee, Counselor Nagy; Complete Streets Committee, Counselor Nagy; Housing Committee, Counselor Roy; LA Transit Committee, Counselor Chittam; Lake Auburn Watershed Protection Commission, Counselor Chittam; Lewiston Area Public Health Committee, Counselor Longchamp; Lewiston Seniors Advisory Counselor Galant; Loan Qualification Committee, Counselor Galant; Library Board of Trustees, Mayor Shalene; Maine Municipal Association Legislative Policy Committee, Mayor Shalene and Deputy City Administrator; South Park Industrial Park Board of Directors, Council President Harriman and Mayor Shalene; and Youth Advisory Council, Counselor Sewell.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittam?
Second.
Followed by Counselor Glant. Discussion? Counselor Harriman?
I noticed it says it on the information sheet, but does this motion also cover the appointment of Counselor Chittam and Counselor Glant to the Finance Committee?
It doesn't, Counselor, only because that is the sole purview of the Council President and does not require a vote of the full council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Agenda item number 15.
Item number 15, Appointments to Various City Boards and Committees. There are four items for requested action. The first item is to receive the mayor's appointments to various city boards and committees.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Are we, we're going to have?
Right.
We should have received it first.
Right, so the first one actually does not require any council action. It's just to receive any appointments that the mayor has. The appointments, these particular appointments in the first category are ones that the mayor can make 100% solely and do not require any council confirmation. So if the mayor has any appointments that you'd like to announce, Mr. Mayor, at this time, you're welcome to do so. If not, it doesn't have to be done, and we can go to item number 2, whatever is easiest.
Do you have the list that we talked about earlier today?
Uh, no.
Okay, we will do it another time.
Okay.
And I will email the council.
Okay, thank you.
And we'll read it into the public record at the following meeting.
Sure, okay, thank you. So then the next item for requested action is number 2, to approve the mayor's nominations regarding his appointments to the Housing Committee, Lewiston Housing Authority, and Planning Board, and a council vote is required.
I have an appointment to the Housing Committee, Roger Burnier.
And is that for the owner of multi-unit property, the Lewiston homeowner or the tenant position?
I think it's, I think it's the homeowner.
Rog, I'm sorry, what was the name again?
Roger Burnier.
Roger Burnier. Okay, so the council would be voting separately on these, so then the first item would be the Housing Committee, which would be to, the motion before the council would be to approve the mayor's nomination of appointing Roger Burnier as a full-member Lewiston homeowner position to the city's housing committee.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Glant, followed by Counselor Harriman. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Chittum.
I'm afraid I don't have enough information about this candidate or nomination, so I'm unwilling to vote on it tonight until I learn more.
Further comments from the council? Were these forwarded, all the names were forwarded, all the applications were forwarded us, correct, Madam Clerk?
No, because we did not have your nominations, Mr. Mayor, so we did not provide the entire list of applications to the council.
Yes, okay, thank you for that clarification. Do, how does the rest of the council feel?
I would like some more time.
I will withdraw that nomination so we can file around, circle around the application. The next nomination that I have is for Alex Pine to move from associate to a full member of the Planning Board.
I would move to accept that nomination.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Counselor Roy. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Having met Mr. Pine just scant minutes ago, and being favorably impressed with him, and also respecting Counselor Nay Jean's experience with him, despite the fact that we didn't have prior notice of this, I do feel comfortable in voting.
Further comments from the council? Public comment on this agenda item, or this nomination?
Mike Marquardt, 12 Collins Street, Ward 7, and a member of the Planning Board. I'm just curious, obviously I know Alex Pine, I don't have any issue with Mr. Pine. I'm just curious, which one of the positions he's going to be appointed to, because I believe there are unexpired terms versus a full three-year term.
Yeah, I will appoint him to a full term.
Mr. Mayor?
We're still public comment. Further public comment? Back to the council. Counselor Chittum.
Mr. Mayor, there are two three-year terms, according to the sheet in front of us, and one full-member, one-year term. I didn't understand which term you were appointing Mr. Pine to.
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, there's two full-member positions, each with a three-year term, is that correct?
Correct.
And we will use one of those slots for Mr. Pine?
Yes.
Thank you. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, city councilors. Yes, item number 3.
Item number 3, to review the applications submitted for appointment to the Lewiston-Auburn Airport Board, and to appoint applicants interested. I will clarify for the council that we sent you an email, I think it was yesterday, clarifying that this motion printed in your book is to review applications for appointment to both the Airport Board as well as the Railroad Board. You will note in the email that we sent you, that was my error in thinking that when Counselor Chittum was elected to the council, that he would automatically have to vacate his seat on the Railroad Board. As we did some more research on the staff level, that board is a private corporation and not one solely of city government, so therefore, it is not a conflict of interest under the Charter to hold an elective position and an appointed position to the Railroad Board. So therefore, we do not have an opening or vacancy on the Railroad Board at this time. So the only action before the council, should they choose to act or be interested in acting, is to review applications submitted to the Airport Board. I will note that you had two applications in your packet, one came in last night that I emailed to you this morning as well. So you do have three applications before you for consideration. You also do not have to limit your appointments to the applications submitted, you're welcome to appoint anyone who is eligible to hold the position.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. I would like to nominate Mark Blaze for the Airport Board as a current member and a pilot. I think that he would bring his, or continue to bring his experience to the board.
Thank you.
Second.
Do nominations need a second, Madam Clerk?
They do not, no, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Chittum. Further discussion on this nomination?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Chittum.
I wholeheartedly support the appointment of Mark Blaze to the Airport Board for a second three-year term. He has been invaluable in that board in the past, he has experience, he is a pilot, which is sorely lacking on that board, so I wholeheartedly endorse him.
Public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0. And then the fourth item, Mr. Mayor, of item number 15, the fourth one is just to announce the appointment, Counselor Galant has made an appointment to the Lewiston Seniors Advisory Council for the Ward 7 representative, and he has appointed Paul Bopelant. And also in addition, yesterday, Counselor Sewell made the appointment of Billy Jane Cook to the same committee, Senior Advisory Council, representing Ward 5. Those are appointments that the councilors can make directly for their ward and do not require a vote by the council.
Excellent, thank you so much, Madam Clerk, and we are now on Agenda item number 16.
Item number 16, Resolve, Adopting the Lewiston Leeds Program. Requested action, to approve the resolve adopting the Lewiston Leeds Program.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Glant, seconded by Counselor Sewell. I just want to say this has been a really good program, to, a great program, to highlight the incredible residents that we have in our city and the incredible work that they do. So thank you so much, Administrator Hunter, for this idea about a year ago, so. Further discussion from the council? Counselor Chittum?
Question, this is a year-to-year reinstatement of this program, is there a way to make it more permanent or less frequent?
I'm sorry. Yeah, you could put it in the policy manual, I thought. Is this the final one? Because this wasn't the one I, this would have been on the S-Drive.
Well, they're looking that over, we're going to go to public comment.
Yes, we could, I would, to answer your question, yes, we could make that into the policy manual.
And you could draft up just such an agenda item for that?
Yeah.
Okay, at a future time. Public comment? Back to the council. Counselor Sewell.
Is this for?
Can I just move in your mic?
Oh, sorry. Choosing within our own ward?
Yes, that's the intention.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Harriman?
Thank you, yes, just one minor correction under the third whereas, it says December 31st, 2023, so that should just be 2024.
Thank you, Counselor.
Duly noted. Counselor Chittum?
Before making minor corrections, could we change the word establishes to continues in the third whereas?
Yep, we can do that as well.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Would you be so kind as to call the vote?
Yes, sir. Counsel from Word 1?
Yes.
Counsel from Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Agenda item number 17.
Item number 17, To Grant Permission for the City Administrator to Assign City Staff Members to Participate in the Public Safety Ad-Hoc Committee. Requested action, to grant permission for the City Administrator to assign city staff members to participate in the Public Safety Ad-Hoc Committee.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittum, seconded by Counselor Harriman. Discussion. Public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Agenda item number 18.
Item number 18, Order Authorizing the Execution of Municipal Quick Claim Deeds for Real Estate Located at 1316 Sabata Street, 1409 Sabata Street, 165 Spring Street, 179 Spring Street, 703 Lisbon Street Rear, and 717 Lisbon Street Rear. Requested action, to approve the order authorizing the execution of municipal quick claim deeds for real estate located at 1316 Sabata Street, 1409 Sabata Street, 165 Spring Street, 179 Spring Street, 703 Lisbon Street Rear, and 717 Lisbon Street Rear.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Counselor Chittum?
Second.
Followed by Counselor Sewell. Discussion. Counselor Chittum?
Question, what is a special tax? I understand real taxes and personal property taxes, but what is a special tax?
So if we had issued a demolition order through condemnation, and if we, the city, has to pay for that demolition, we have the ability to collect a special tax on that.
Thank you.
Public comment? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Word 1?
Yes.
Word 2?
Yes.
Word 3?
Yes.
Word 4?
Yes.
Word 5?
Yes.
Word 6?
Yes.
Word 7?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, we are now up to reports and updates from the council. Are there any? I don't know if we've been to any meetings since. I think we're going to move forward from that, and now we're up to new business. Is there any? Do you need to be recognized, Counselor Nay Jean?
I can wait until others go.
Well, I mean, who, not all at once now.
Just a mayor.
Counselor Chittum, please.
Thank you. Yes, I raised the question of bringing the fee schedule back to the council, I'm not sure what the process is for that.
So typically, what will happen as part of the budget process, staff has been asked to review that, to look at how our fees compare to recovering the cost for providing those services, how they compare to other municipalities, and so forth. As part of the budget process, there's a form that goes to the Finance Director that asks the council to consider either increasing or decreasing fees and/or adopting new fees. If that were to matriculate into an actual request for approval on the city council, the city council would be asked to do that prior to adopting the budget. Therefore, if there was a significant fee adjustment to be made in the budget, it could be incorporated in that budget. So that's something that you could direct staff to start reviewing some of those fee schedules, to see if there are any adjustments like the circus and carnival one that you mentioned earlier.
Far be it from me to ask for more work from staff, when was the last time this fee schedule was examined, do you know?
We did that a number of years ago. We kind of indexed all of our fees because it hadn't been done for a while. And then we randomly will assess fees and look at them, or extract fees and look at them and compare them to see, are we in the neighborhood of what other municipalities are covering? Because especially for events, we don't want to price ourselves out of neighboring municipalities. So those kind of get sampled on a rotating basis, it's something that I can instruct all the department heads to kind of look and take that litmus test to see if we're still in the ballpark, most definitely, and then bring any ones forward as part of the budget process.
May I ask that that happen?
Certainly.
Thank you.
Counselor Nay Jean?
I just wanted to kind of make a general statement concerning, I know that we're looking at possibly meeting with the Lewiston delegation, and with the new elections, with the new folks that are in place in both Lewiston and Auburn, I think that looking at both, some of the intermunicipal and interlocal agreements is both a regional and an area approach for some of the challenges that we're looking at with, for instance, homelessness would be a major issue, some of the housing issues that we're running into, for instance, the GA fund, you know, resources. So, you know, I don't know exactly how we go about making that, like, I don't know if it's a resolve or just like an opinion that we should be working together in order to address some of these challenges on a more regional level with our involvement and support. But I just wanted to put that forward as something to, I don't know if that's like a, how do we?
Mr. Mayor?
Administrator Hunter, yes.
Certainly. I believe the email was sent out to all of you, but with the email changes, I can understand where you may not have picked it up quite yet. The state delegation will be here during the workshop on the 23rd. It would be great to kind of get a general list of areas you want to explore and get a little detail behind it, you know, if we did something like a shelter, you know, are we looking at funding, are we looking at, you know, an area shelter, you know, just put some details on it so they have something more to kind of sink their teeth into. Likewise, and I have not sent the email out, but the, we are working with the school committee to have a joint workshop on February 13th. Yes, February 13th, I will confirm that one more time with the city, or the school superintendent. Likewise, the mayor, the Auburn mayor, and myself, and Phil Crowell, the manager of Auburn, met last week, and we are looking at scheduling kind of a get-together between the two councils and the administrative staff to kind of start out slowly and, you know, establish a rapport, and then kind of work through some of those items that you had mentioned, joint agency initiatives, you know, perhaps events that we could collaborate on and so forth. So that meeting has not been scheduled yet, but it is in the works.
Okay. And then there was just one other item I just wanted to touch on, and that's between the Community Development Block Grant and Housing Committee appointments, I believe there are a few of them that have been there for over 60 days, and one of them would be the multi-unit tenant piece. And so I'm really hoping that we can have appointments to move forward for the next meeting, but if we can maybe direct some of those pieces to make sure that we provide the appropriate support, to make sure that we can make those decisions.
Yes, no, and I appreciate everyone's patience, and we will be coming to the, coming to the days here with appointments for the next meeting. Counselor Glant?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of quick questions, one to the city administrator, to get something on the agenda, the procedure is to do what? Just tell you in writing, need permission from the mayor or the body?
Per your council rules?
Yes.
You can email me, and then it would be before Wednesday at that deadline. As a courtesy to the rest of the council, now that we have all the emails up and functioning, I would communicate that to the rest of the council and the mayor as well.
All right, could I tell you tonight?
Certainly.
I'd like to see homelessness as a discussion item, a warming shelter, some kind of senior citizen complex or something for them, and senior housing. Those are all items that have carried over from the last year, year and a half, and I think it's important that we move them forward quickly and not just, you know, just kind of drag our feet. I know there's a lot of been discussion out there on some of those items, but I'd like to see that it's going to get colder, or another week behind doing anything for people in a cold. Second item is if we wanted to have you all explore the ability to close off Main Street and Lewiston downtown, so that the businesses could do like Portland and Brunswick and Bath, and have the public be out front, no cars running them over, how would we explore doing that?
Are you talking Main Street or Lisbon Street?
Lisbon Street, excuse me.
Okay.
Lisbon Street, you know, like from Friday night at 6:00 PM till Saturday night at, you know, something that would structure two evenings where we're losing people, people don't want to go down there. We have a great parking garage at the corner, right across from the library. People could park and walk down that section from the library down and go get entertained and do things.
So what I would suggest is I'd want to talk to my management team, particularly public safety, and workshop that item. And then once we workshop that, if, you know, once you hear the pros and cons of doing